All right, with apologies to the public, we're a little late today. We had an executive session and even though we concluded our business at seven, we needed to take a little break before we could start. Also, I'm informed that the challenges the public may have experienced last week regarding the broken voice is, challenges have been resolved. Either way, the tape of last week was verified as good and the same thing will happen this week should there be a challenge. I've also been informed that the chief cable individual himself is on standby to try to help resolve things right away and it was tested today to make sure it was streaming properly. So, we hope that's working and I'm sure I'll know within a few moments if it's not. Under, I'm going to review the agenda for everybody. We are in the Select Board Meeting Room, Monday, February 4th, 2019, in the second floor of the Groton Town Hall. We'll have announcements followed by public comment. On the Town Manager's Report, we'll go over the Select Board's agenda schedule. We'll consider approving Marina Cabot-Uyeva to the Sustainability Commission. We'll approve Select Board Member Goal Assignments. We'll vote to pursue Green Community Designation. We'll discuss and approve Placing a Warrant Article in 2019 Springtown Meeting Warrant Institute of Ticket Tax in the Town of Groton. We'll discuss potential development at the Groton Country Club, discuss the formation of committee for this purpose. We'll discuss approving a one-day beer and wine license for Salt and Light Cafe for a private event to be held Tuesday, February 12th, 2019, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. We'll consider approving a one-day beer and wine license for Groton History Center for a wine tasting gala to be held at the Groton School on Saturday, March 16th, 2019, from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM. We'll have an FY 2020 budget discussion as our placeholder as always. Under other business, we're going to discuss the Education Promise Act Resolution Request we received from the Groton Dunstable Regional School District Board. We'll review and potentially select an investigator pursuant to the Board's vote on January 29th, 2019, to conduct an investigation using an outside entity and we'll determine the makeup and membership of subcommittee to negotiate a new three-year contract with the Town Manager. Following on that, we have ongoing issues. We have our Select Board Liaison Reports, if any, and we have our regular scheduled minutes to review of January 28th, 2019. All right, under announcements, are there any other announcements? Mr. Geiger?
Saturday night, I had the privilege of attending Veterans Night, which is sponsored by the fine young men and women who make up the Groton Dunstable Vashley Hockey Team. Their game was played at the Groton School. They played North Middlesex. It was a good, clean game. Dawn was rooting for North Middlesex because that's where she's from and the Groton team won seven to one. But on behalf of all the veterans in town, I want to publicly thank these fine young men and women for taking the time and putting the extra energy in to support veterans that evening.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, I have-
You want to follow that up? You sure?
Well, yeah, this is actually, this is actually good news. The dog, police dog, has really taken on a life of its own. The generosity of our residents and some non-residents towards the new police dog have been, has been outstanding. We received a $500 donation today from Bob and Judy Anderson and I thank them for their, for their generosity. We also received a $5,000 anonymous donation towards the dog as well. And when I was telling my stepdaughter, a college student with no money, about it, she said, "Well, let me give you all the money that's in my wallet." She pulled $20 out and handed it to me. So, we're up to $9,520 for the dog. I will tell you that the, I talked to the chief today. We spend about $8,000 a year if we're going to do this between supplies, insurance, medical stuff, and things like that for, to have a K-9 position. So, this money is going to go a long way to help him do that. There's also a GoFundMe account that has been started by students of Lawrence Academy and I believe they're up to $1,700.
Wow.
What I said to the chief today is the best way to handle that is to have a one-time, when they have that money, to make one check to the town payable to the, to the Town of Groton for that purpose. People like to use the GoFundMe, which is fine, but Lawrence Academy is in charge of it. I'd ask them to give the check. We will be sending out letters to everybody that's donated money, thanking them, letting them know it's a tax deductible donation and I'm very pleased with the generosity of the people that have come forward. The fact that we're up to $9,520 bucks is outstanding. It all started when Arthur, at the FinCon meeting, said, "I'll write a check for three grand" and next thing you know, the floodgates opened. And Arthur gave me his $3,000 check tonight.
Does the Board need to vote to-
Yes. I want you to create, thank you Barry, that was the next thing I was going to say. I'm going to ask the Board, I could put this on another agenda if you would like for formal action, but I want you to vote to create a K-9 gift fund for the Police Department.
Why don't we bring that to next week's agenda just as an official line item so that that gives people some awareness and notice and perhaps we'll get more donations between now and then and give us some more publicity on our officially posted agenda. I saw another hand. Mr. Dodd, are you done with your announcement?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Member Pine?
Yeah, I just wanted to report that John Geiger and I both attended the Public Officials' Breakfast at the Neshoba Tech High School last Thursday morning. It was a delicious breakfast, but it was very, more importantly, it was a very, very impressive program that they put on about what their school offers, what their students are doing, in addition to also talking about the budget for us this year. It was, it was very impressive.
Any particular takeaways?
We'll talk about it under Article Item 9 in my Budget Update.
All right, great. So, we'll be talking about that. Thank you. All right, anybody else from the Board announcement? Any announcements from the public? All right, under public comment, any public comments? Seeing none, we'll move forward. Mr. Town Manager?
Mr. Chairman, I would ask the Board, the Sustainability Commission has asked that we appoint Marina Cabot-Yava to the, Cabot-Yeva to the Sustainability Commission with a term to expire June 30th, 2019. I'd ask the Board to make that appointment.
Still moved? Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion from Board members? Anything from the public? All, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye? Any abstentions or opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, as we discussed last week, Board members have provided me with their requested goal assignments. I've given you a list based on that. So, going through this, I'd ask the Board, unless there's an objection to the particular goals that you are assigned, I would ask the Board to consider approving these and saying, "Let's get started on them."
As such, is there any objection to anybody that's been assigned, any idea, any, any item on this board, on this document?
Number six. No. Five. No, four. Sorry.
That's okay, John.
There it is. I'm fine with both of the ones that you've identified for me, but four for me is conditional and for me to accept that, I need the Board to agree that on a future agenda, you will work to identify exactly what you expect to get out of the language that's there.
So, you need some clarification on the benchmark?
We're going to define what you expect to receive from those efforts.
Can I work with you, John, to come up with a draft objective for the Board to consider?
Well, I think the Board, I, the Board needs to, work with the Board in terms of what they like to see come from this. They're, they're the, that's who you deliver to.
No, I understand, but I always like to give the Board something to debate.
Well, talk to, talk to the Fire Chief, talk to the Police Chief, talk to the EMS Director.
Okay.
Incidentally, that is the Fire Chief, I think.
For now, yes. Temporarily. I haven't made a determination on if I'm going to change that.
All right, under, under Mr. Geiger's request, of course, should a matter come forward, request some clarification, I will make sure that it is on an agenda should I be Chair. Should another person be Chair? Hope they decide the same thing. Ms. Manugan? Allison would be appropriate, excuse me.
Yeah, I prefer that. My only question is, is how do we want to look at the Community Compact Agreement and decide whether each piece of these, you know, each of these goals can fit into that and whether we want to go forward with one of those?
I was, I was thinking about that.
Yeah.
And what I would like to recommend is that you and I, Allison, sit down at one of our weekly meetings, open up the book of Community Compact, look at the goals, cross-check it versus these and then bring back a recommendation to the full Board.
Okay.
I think that's the best way to approach it, so maybe you and I could start Thursday morning if you'd like.
Sounds good.
I have no qualms with that. Any other member of the Board have a challenge or with that, that idea? Hearing none, we'll assume that we'll move forward that way. Thank you for taking that on. Any further discussion, comments, requests, ideas, repudiations? Hearing none, we'll move forward with a, with a formalized vote.
Is it the vote to assign these individuals?
To accept the assignments.
That's correct.
I move that we approve the individual Select Board Members assigned to each goal as presented.
Been moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Friendly amendment?
Friendly amendment.
Subject to the continuing service of the individuals assigned on this Board, meaning that if for some reason Barry and I are up for reelection and if we decide not to run or if we don't win reelection, that the next person would take over the assignments. Follow what I'm saying? Because you're going to, what would happen is you're just going to hamstring everyone else. Elections are in three months.
I, I think that the Board can reconsider assignments upon that time without needing an amendment to say so, in my opinion. I've certainly seen it done before where there were items that we reapplied.
If that's any feeling.
Members are no longer there.
I withdraw my friendly amendment.
Thanks, Josh. It's good feedback though, absolutely. All right, moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or negatives? I heard it unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, as you're aware, we've been gathering information pursuing the Green Community Designation for the Town of Groton. We've had several meetings with state officials concerning the process and the Board did conduct one public hearing a couple of weeks ago. I believe it appears that we are ready to make a decision to that end. I'm recommending that the Board vote to pursue that designation and start the process for the certification. The first step in the process is to adopt the so-called Stretch Code at Town Meeting. If you go to page eight in your packet, you will see a summary that Kelly Brown provided to me for this process. It explains the, the process of adopting the Stretch Code. It gives us what the code would look like. It also gives us the, the Town Meeting votes. I think the sample code, this is pretty much what every community who's adopted the Stretch Code has adopted. So, I would write this up with the Board's okay as a, as a warrant article for the 2019 Springtown Meeting if the Board so designates that this evening. And I would recommend that we make the effective date of the Stretch Code January 1st, 2020. That was Kelly Brown's recommendation and I concur with her. So, I would ask the Board to authorize the article and, and vote to pursue the Green Community Designation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Geiger and then Allison?
I, I would only vote to approve the article on the condition that we have it reviewed by Town Council and the woman that was out here doing all the presentations.
Sure. She gave me this, so I'm sure she'll be happy with it, but Town Council does review all warrant articles.
Allison?
Mark, can you just talk a little bit about why, my understanding is that we could either pick July 1st or January 1st?
Yes.
So, what is the rationale for January 1st?
I, I think January 1st to give people plenty of time to understand that it's coming down the pike. I think you'll, you have a vote in April. The bylaw has to go to the Attorney General for approval. He has 90 days in which to approve it. So, usually we get back Attorney General approval sometime in August.
Okay.
By the time it comes back, I think January 1st makes, makes more sense. I kind of agree with Kelly Brown on that.
Thank you.
Ms. Josh or Becky, do either of you have questions on this matter?
No.
Does anybody like to comment on the meeting that took place, this room or in this Town Hall on the 17th? Everybody's cool and composed and we learned-
Absolutely attended it.
We learned a lot and we're satisfied with what we saw?
I'll comment that we did not have large attendance, but it was filmed for TV and the people who came were very interested, asked very useful questions. I think that everyone in the room had a good understanding of the program and certainly there was strong support for us to proceed with this.
Okay, I'll accept a motion if there's one to be made. Go ahead, Allison.
Question first? I'm just wondering, how do we go about setting kind of the dates so that we have the wiggle room for that, the window, right? For when it starts? How does that process unfold?
I, I made a recommendation to you tonight. That's how, Kelly Brown recommended that we, you mean the date that it goes into effect?
No.
I'm sorry, misunderstood.
No, I thought we had a three-year window to, to look at energy savings?
That's the next step in the process. We need to meet and we need to decide when we formally apply in October. We need to set all those dates and times, so that'll be another, Becky and I will probably bring back something to the Board to debate sometime this summer after it's adopted. Do you agree with that, Becky?
Yeah, and we had set up a committee of department heads who have input to work with, so.
Clear?
Good question.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I move that this Board add the language provided to us by Kelly Brown to adopt the Stretch Code.
Stretch, stretch.
Stretch. Did I say stress?
Yeah.
I can't imagine where that came from. Stretch Code adoption process.
That's like stretch.
For the, for the spring 2019 Town Meeting, subject to wording confirmed by Town Council.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Anything from the public?
Can I ask you to include in that motion that we are going to pursue the Green Communities' Designation based on that vote? I would add that as a-
You don't want that as a separate motion or?
No, have it as part of the same motion to pursue, as a matter of fact, if I may, I would ask that the motion, may I?
Please.
I would ask that the motion say that the Town, the Board votes to pursue the Green Community Designation and to file the first step in the process, which is the Stretch Code Designation at Town Meeting.
Subject to Town Council approval. I withdraw my original motion and adopt the Town Manager's Boarding as my motion.
Are you comfortable with that?
Second.
Okay. I'll get that to Dawn. I'll get that to Dawn.
Pretty much myself.
Is the Board comfortable with understanding what we're doing now? What I've heard, and I've heard it, I heard it withdrawn and then added and seconded, is that we are going to inform the public that we intend to pursue Green Community Designation and by doing so, we are going to go af, go through the first step of the process, which is to put a warrant article on the Springtown Meeting for adoption of the Stretch Code.
It's a mass building.
Mass building Stretch Code. I'll just caveat it Stretch Code.
Excellent.
Is that, is that clear?
That's what I-
All right, so that's the motion on the table. Is there any further discussion from the Board? Anything from the public? All right, I'll take a vote on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Any abstained? That's unanimous as well. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, one of the items that the Select Board had discussed previously was to pursue a ticket tax on events here in Groton, performing events, live performing events here in the Town of Groton. I did work with Town Council and if you go to page, if you go to page, oh, did I not put that in the packet, Dawn? The proposed draft article?
It's in a center here. I think it's in a-
It's here. It's page 11. Oh, page 11. Okay, thank you. If you go to page 11, you see the draft, you see the draft proposed warrant article and I will tell you that this warrant article has been reviewed by Town Council, amended from my original draft. We cleaned it up a lot. The one, the one issue that, that I was concerned about, and I talked to Josh about this because I had put wording in there, and that was for student events at the Performing Arts Center for the Groton Dunstable Regional School District in which they charge admission. Under this bylaw, if it were to, to be successful, it would have caused a ticket tax for school events. And so, when we wrote this, I added language excluding events managed by the Groton Dunstable Regional School District for that purpose. So, Town Council has reviewed this, he's looked at it, and we are proposing that we go forward to Town Meeting and request special legislation for, for a ticket tax not to exceed 5%, which would be set by the, by the Select Board. And that this seems to be something that it makes sense pursuing. I will let you know that I sent an email to Representatives of Indian Hill Music Center because this would affect them, inviting them to the meeting tonight. I don't know if there are any representatives here from Indian Hill, but you have the, the documents, you have the information there before you. I've also, Josh also put together a spreadsheet and I will turn this discussion now over to Select Board Member Deegan.
Josh?
Yes, thank you. So, I proposed this a while back and we had initially considered making it specific to Indian Hill, however, upon further review, we decided that we would make this specific to any venue within the Town of Groton, however exempting the school district for non-paying events. Is that correct, Mark?
Yes, that is correct.
And I think the same would apply to Indian Hill for performances done by their students or the parents and friends and whatnot that are non-paying events equally. Would you agree with that, Mark?
I agree with that too, sir.
So, with that said, not knowing anything other than Indian Hill, and I'm going to use this for an example in terms of what kind of revenue this would drive, the Planning Board approved 12 events in year one for the new venue of 1,000 seats with the 1,500 seating capacity lawn area when the doors open for a total of 2,500 seats. So, if you took 12 events at 2,500 seats, that would be 30,000 potential tickets if they sold out to the maximum, all those events. In year one, if you did a 5% tax and a ticket cost was $20 per ticket, that would generate a dollar per ticket at 5%. That's a surcharge just like if you were to get something from Ticketmaster or Live Nation or just about any concert, that there would be no cost borne on whomever is providing the event, whether it be Indian Hill or any other entity within the Town of Groton, that the ticket tax would be borne by the end user who purchases the ticket. So, at $20 a ticket, 5% would yield $30,000 to Indian Hill for the 12 events. At $25-
Not to Indian Hill, to us.
I'm sorry, from-
From Indian.
Events at Indian Hill to the Town of Groton. And conversely, if it was 5% at a $25 ticket, it would be 37.5. 5% at a $30 ticket, 45,000. 5% at a $40 ticket, $60,000. In year two, again, using Indian Hill, 14 events is what the Planning Board had approved and that would generate, the numbers as shown there, at $20, $25, $30, and $40, up to a potential of $70,000 at full sales. What's not included in these numbers would be a smaller venue inside of Indian Hill. There's a smaller Performing Arts Center. Its capacity for seating escapes me, but I recall it to be 300 to 400, as well as any events held at, whether it be, say Gibbet Hill wanted to get an entertainment license or say Forge &amp; Vine or another venue here in town wanted to get an entertainment license. If they're charging for a ticket, they would have to put this tax on and the same would go for anybody renting from Groton Dunstable, the Groton School, Lawrence Academy, they're included as well for ticketed events paid for by the public. So, the total amount of revenue that could be generated by this could far exceed the examples which is shown up there at 5%, which is for Indian Hill.
You'd say this is a conservative estimate, right?
It's, well, this is predicated on full sellout of all the events. I would have to say this is an extremely conservative estimate when you add all the other venues in town that charge for their tickets.
Well, before I allow the Chair to go first, I normally defer to everybody else, but I got a few questions, concerns that I'd like to go through with this.
Sure.
Is that okay? Then I can focus on everybody else. I apologize. One of my concerns is that because the word event is not defined, I fear that this could, this could be hitting things like Taste in Neshoba. It could be hitting things like when my kids in their camarada or performance, which is the Indian Hills, basically child education thing where basically parents go to see their kids play in their orchestras and they, they do charge 10 bucks a ticket to help, help pay for some of the goodies and things like that, that would be hit. My concern is that the friends of the individuals who put on the charity show for GDF might be hit because they do a charity night and that requires admission. I also concerned that given the way this is written and not defined with the word events, that also GD at Play, if they have an event at Gibbet Hill where they, I think they do charge a door, a door ticket to get in and it goes to general fund, maybe not. I may be misconstraining, but I think there's a lot of things in town that this would hit that by not articulating what we mean by event, we are affecting far more than the intent, if the intent is to affect all of those things, I'm absolutely fine. Let's get that on the table and let everybody know we intend to affect all of those things as policy. But if we don't intend to affect those, we need to really drop a definition of event in there.
I think what I mean, just to answer that, and I think that's a really good point, is that if the event has a performer that is getting paid money to do that event.
Okay.
That's what I mean. So, if that language is missing, so if it's kids, you know, performing for free, or if it's trivia night where you're not getting paid to do trivia, but you're paying to attend, I have no problem with exempting that. So, I think, Mark, if we were to insert language in there where that says that, you know, the performer is getting paid, that that is subject to that, I think you could also take events with 200, 200 tickets or less and potentially exempt them. I don't know. That's something on the table.
Whether that's legal or not, right, yeah.
Okay?
Well, nothing's legal at this point.
But whether, whether you can exempt, I mean, yeah, no, I understand. Point taken. Point taken.
I, I like, I like Josh's definition of event and I think we should add a definition and I should have done that. We should have a definition of that.
Thank you for bringing that up because I have left that out as well.
I think you, you want to be careful with the word getting paid because people could be under salary, under contract to perform for a lifelong, so there could be lots of different things. So, I mean, we got to work on the language a little bit. Appreciate that. Let's get some analysis. I think I saw Becky's hand first and then John.
I would just say, we need to really think about this because it could be a fundraising event where your, where a DJ is paid, you know, to have a dance and so, we have to figure out what it is we mean and, and write that language correctly. I also had wondered about the other schools and you said in your sense of it, we would not be exempting Groton School, Lawrence Academy, Neshoba, Neshoba Tech or any other school.
Neshoba Tech's not in Groton.
Yeah, but they might want to perform some, they might want to have a performance in our Performing Arts Center. So, again, I think we need to think carefully about this. I, I also had a question about this language in the proposed article that says up to 5%. I assume that then if this, if we were to pass something like this at Town Meeting, that then there would be a subsequent discussion at our Board about what the amount is.
The way this is written, Becky, right, the Board would set the five-
And that it would be also possible to make a decision that instead of a percentage, that we were just going to charge a flat $1 per ticket surtax or $1.50 per ticket rather than getting involved in a percentage if we chose to. Would that be allowed, do you?
Well, if, if you set a dollar flat and tickets are $3, you're actually exceeding the 5%. you're actually exceeding the 5% requirement. So I do not think that would be allowed. You cannot have a law that says you can only 5% and then go and charge a surcharge of a dollar and expect that to be applicable across the board.
Right. Again, so, and, and then there, that kind of raises the question, do we want to put a, a floor, you know, like a ticket that is $10, we're not going to charge, but if it's over $10, we are. Lots of ways of thinking about this.
So, yes, again, anytime you have a system that's gamified, people are going to game it. If I say it's a $20 threshold, people are going to sell tickets for $19.99. And I don't blame them for doing that because we opened that door, so let's-
But I mean, that's, it's just something that for us to think about is what I'm saying. I, I appreciate that you've raised all these questions, Barry, because I think they're really good ones. I think we need to think a little bit more about this.
What we need to do is we need to realize that there is a cost of community, to the community for having events within the town. We have police, we have fire, sure, I'm not just talking about details, police details that work at, say, town meeting, which obviously would not be a ticketed event.
Maybe coming.
But no, at any rate, you know, whether it be an event at Indian Hill, graduation at Groton School, whatever the situation may be, that we need to collect tax revenue in, in different ways. And again, you are passing this on to the end user. So, does this need to be tweaked? I would like as a homework assignment for everybody just to take what's written here, take a look at it and then comment back to Mark or Don and then please put this back on a future agenda at the end of February, beginning of March, so we can refine this more. But I think my point is, and Mark's point in working this up is, in general concept, does the board support a ticket tax subject to implementing some of the changes that we've discussed tonight and maybe some of the ones we haven't thought about?
And adoption at town meeting.
And adoption for Springtown meeting, of course.
The word closes on the 22nd, so I'd like to add an article that we can tweak if the board so chooses.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking right now and certainly tweaks are welcome.
People heard Josh's ask. He's asking, is the board willing to support the idea and premise that we, that we are as a policy intend to establish a ticket tax in the town of Groton? Becky, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I, I, I support the idea. I wonder about setting a, a price below which we wouldn't charge it or any, an attendance amount above which we would charge it.
We talked about that.
Those are some of the tweaks that I would think about.
Yep.
But I do support the concept.
Allison?
So I support the concept. I think there are a lot of questions and tweaks. I have some concerns that could potentially get in the way of my supporting ultimately whatever we are looking at. But I support the concept. I don't know whether we want to go more into what those concerns are or whether we just want to do it by submission of comments.
What I would like, it'd help me if, to answer that, Mr. Chairman, if I may, if, if the board provides me with, with comments directly to me, I can tweak the article, try to incorporate those and bring it back to the full board for, for discussion. I know the first thing I need to do is come up with a definition of "event". I want to get that drafted and bring it back to you. I, I understand Becky's comment in terms of do we set a price or do we set a, a percentage? I, I would recommend a percentage. It's a lot more easy for the board to, to deal with percentages as prices increase than adding a dollar amount. But that's something for the board to decide moving forward. But I think that's what I would recommend we do to, to bring this forward, if the board decides to put it on the warrant. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'll get to the public in a moment, excuse me, Allison.
So I'm just wondering, do other towns have this and if so, were there-
No, we would be the leader in Massachusetts, huh?
No such thing in Massachusetts.
No, that's not true in Boston.
Okay.
Cities can do it. Municipalities cannot do it.
As of today.
I guess my question was more whether, whether there already exists-
So Allison.
A policy that's beneficial.
So basically, I contacted Lennox, where Tanglewood was, Foxborough, where Gillette Stadium is, Mansfield, where the Xfinity Center is, and spoke with the town managers and/or administrators in all the communities. They do not have ticket taxes per se along these lines. What they have done is access user licenses. So like in Foxborough, for example, believe it or not, the land underneath Gillette Stadium is owned by the town of Foxborough. It is not owned by the Kraft family, it is not owned by the Patriots. Okay? So they have a ground lease they negotiate, but then they also have an access license, which within the license stipulates that they have to provide X amount of police, X amount of fire, X amount of ambulances. And in addition to that, they receive between $70,000 and $100,000 per year for that access license to have events at the stadium, above and beyond that. Xfinity Center works in a similar situation. They don't own it, but they again pay for an access use license. And in Lennox, they pay something and I got an explanation and I scratched my head and asked again and I got an answer that I didn't understand. So I'm working on trying to get the answer out of it. So, Boston and cities, they do have ticket tax, city tax that's applied to tickets. So if you were to go to an event at the Garden or you were to go to an event at a larger nightclub.
Wayne.
Wayne, there is a tax associated as a surcharge on the tickets which goes to the town. City, excuse me.
So I guess what I was looking for is some sort of verbiage that we're not trying to recreate the wheel. I don't-
No, we're not recreating it. We're going to create it at the municipal level in order to get this to go.
But my point is, if, if other cities have some sort of regulation or legislation that exists allowing this, I think it might benefit us to look at that and use that as a basis rather than-
Look at the city of Boston.
Can we get Boston's maybe, Mark? Can you try and get that?
Okay. Before I get a public comment, I'd love to see if there's a motion on the floor.
I'd like to hear from the two of you.
Oh, I, I, this is part of the original plan as far as I'm concerned, was to have some type of event level surcharge. And I appreciate your knee hitting the table, you okay?
There's a funny bone in you, I didn't know that.
All right, so I, I appreciate the effort you've gone to to try to figure out what's the proper and legal mechanism to make that happen. It's truly, it's, it's not necessarily break the new ground, but it's for a municipality perhaps doing so. And so I, I really appreciate that idea and concept and seeing it try to come to reality here. So that's my stake. Did you want to hear from another member?
Yeah.
Sure.
I think, I think Mr. Geiger is the only one left here that hasn't spoken.
Hanging at the end here. I, I support the concept, but I reserve the right to say I don't support it after I look at the final documentation that's put together.
I agree. All right.
Because I do have some concerns. I'm going to write them down and send them off to Mark, so not tie up here, but thank you, John.
Can we get a motion that we're going to put a placeholder at least on the warrant, please, for this item?
I move that we put a placeholder on the Springtown meeting warrant for the creation of taxation on amusement tickets or entertainment tickets in the town.
It's been moved.
Seconded.
And seconded. Under discussion, remember, we have two members of the public who wanted to either offer common or answer questions, ask questions. Judy? That's not to preclude other members that may have items, just that's who I saw.
How does this affect things, for instance, at Prescott where there's a charge for admission?
That's educational purposes like classes and things along those lines. I'm talking about performers who are, you know, doing music events or dance events.
Okay, but what happens if there's a speaker that is being paid?
Yeah.
Or, or for instance, the, the companies down at Mill Run. They will have events where they will have a speaker come in who is paid and an admission is charged for people to come in for a particular session.
Yeah, I think the easiest way around that is, I had proposed the size of the, the audience. So I had originally put 800 or greater and Josh and I talked about that and we, that's where we came up with the language for Groton Dunstable. But I think we consider a limit of like 300 or greater or something, 200 or greater or something like that. We could talk about that.
Yeah, we should talk about that. Absolutely, good point.
I would think that needs to be based on venue size rather than number of tickets sold simply because-
Seating capacity of X amount or greater.
Right, there's no ability to go back and add a tax once it crosses that 800 or 200 person threshold.
So venues that can seat 300 or more or 200 or more, something like that. I agree with you, Allison, that's a good point.
Mm-hmm.
I, I think I got my mantra.
Mr. Sartini, did you have something you'd like to say or add?
No.
Not at all, okay, I saw your hand earlier, so I apologize.
I'm sorry.
Just saying hi.
Stretching.
My, my fault, no problem. All right, any further discussion from members of the board? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? All right, that moves forward. Please send your comments to the town manager for inclusion. I will ask town managers, have you heard my, has you heard my challenges?
Yes.
Thank you.
Understood, 100%. As we discussed previously, I would like to further examine the idea to create 55 and older housing, including affordable housing component on town-owned property. We've examined the potential for such a development at the Groton Country Club. I'd like to determine how to proceed on that, looking for guidance from the board. To help you with this discussion, I've given you two items. The first is the proposed layout of such a development at the country club. While the other document is a community preservation application for funding to help draft an RFP should we decide to proceed. Now, please note that the CPA, I didn't want the board to think I was jumping the gun here. The CPA application was submitted as a placeholder to meet the Community Preservation Committee's fiscal '20 funding deadline. If we didn't get something in by January 14th, we would have missed this year's funding. Should the board decide not to proceed, we would obviously just withdraw the application. So I want to be clear about that. So, please note, we need to do some further due diligence on the need of this type of development and where to locate it. To that end, I'm recommending that we follow both John and Allison's call to form a committee to investigate this further. I think it's exciting to pursue this and I really look forward to working with the board on this. I've given you a copy of the plan that we got, which is on page 13, and then a copy of the CPA application that Fran Stanley filled out as our housing coordinator to the CPA. And Fran's here now to answer any questions. If you look up here on the map, on the screen, just to, to give you an idea what we're looking at, this is, bottom here is Whitman Road, right down here is Whitman Road. This is the pavilion over here, right, right at this location here. These are the tennis courts, obviously the golf course here. The development could come up, this particular area here. This is the second hole for those of you familiar with the country club. This is the second green right here. This is the third hole that you would tee off from. So it does have potential to do things at the club without impacting the club if this particular area is looked at. It could be anywhere within this, this area, but we were trying to maintain some of the things that, that happen at the country club, which is the pavilion is used by our summer camps as well as the tennis courts. So we were trying to preserve both of those in this, in this review. Within the CPA application, I do want to call your attention to the one line that Fran put into the, into the application that says that if we do not pursue it, we would withdraw the application. Because here it says the select board is reviewing a number of alternatives with respect to whether it will remain specifically the town will want to sell the club and so on and so forth. So there's a lot to consider and that's why we want to have the, the board appoint a committee to help us examine this further. So, that's where I, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And Fran is, is here as well to answer any questions that you may have for her. Thank you.
Becky.
Well, as the person who's overseeing our goal about housing, I would like to be a member of whatever committee we appoint. However, similar to what, what John Geiger asked for about the goal that he's shepherding, my sense is that this proposal is still very amorphous and that our board has not really, isn't really clear about what we want and what we're doing. And I, I think even the vote that we took to fund this study, you know, there was a lot of public comment about our process not being very well thought out and, and I think some of those comments were legitimate. So, and I'm not sure what to suggest, but I'd like to hear from the rest of you about how we should go about exploring this.
So I guess for me, what makes sense would be to create a committee. We would obviously need a charge and a head count and all that kind of thing. And I would like to see that committee ideally approached from kind of two directions. One would be reviewing past housing reports and understanding the need that there was and or is in the town of Groton for, you know, what type of housing do we need, what costs, et cetera. And then secondarily, to look at a high level, what, what town-owned assets we have and I guess determine to some extent how thoroughly we are utilizing them so that this board could then review that and understand what it is that our community owns and what we're doing with it.
Okay, John?
I'm of the opinion, having noodled on this my term for, for a bunch of time, that the thing that we're really missing is a vision statement about what we want this piece of property to, to look like, be like 10 years down the road or 15 years down the road, so that we can then figure out whether things fit into that vision or don't fit into that vision. And, and without that, we're just sort of dicing things up and putting things there which may or may not serve us well in the future. Housing is always going to be useful, but housing next to something that's noisy or, or has lots of bright lights and so forth might not be so desirable. And so maybe some of this could go on in, in, in parallel. But I, I'd just like to see the town put some peoples smarter than I am together and, and come up with a vision.
Can I, John?
For what we want there.
Are you talking about a vision for the country club property?
Yes. It may be a vision that says, when I think about it, okay, we really don't want to see any housing between 119 and, and X and we want whatever types of, of things, activities. Do we want, we see golf being near 1015 down the road, I don't know. But that would all come out in, in a well-crafted vision statement for that property.
Just as an aside, I'll invite, if we do form a committee, please make sure that they discuss the challenges of living near the golf course with those individuals along Lover's Lane and the ideas of how early in the morning there is sound coming into those windows and the ability to sleep in.
And all that stuff involves.
Yeah, there's a lot of things that are involved. So there already has some neighbors there, so make sure that that's discussed and people are aware of that and part of the consideration process. I don't have any, I don't have any specificity because we're kind of talking in generals about the committee. I think that the statements made are absolutely appropriate, that there needs to be a definition of scope and, and, and vision and then what the mission is and then what the, what the committee comes to as to whether or not they recommend pursuing an option like this might be. So I'm perfectly happy moving forward with the idea that we should form a committee. Allison, you had your hand up.
I was just wondering whether the, kind of that vision statement would be created by this committee? And it sounds like, or as I thought about it, it, it sounds like potentially that would be kind of the first step of the committee.
Out of the charge.
Yeah, the, the country club vision, et cetera. And then if the vision was to include housing, then what are the needs that we could meet by?
So, if, if I may, Mr. Chairman, give me the opportunity to draft the charge to bring back to the board for consideration? Is that okay?
Does any member wish to work with the town manager on that? Josh?
I'm not volunteering to work on it, I have some comments.
I already volunteered to work on it.
On the charge or on the committee?
Well, I volunteered to work on the committee and I'm happy to work on the charge.
I'll work with Becky on the charge.
I'm happy to let someone else do that too.
Josh, Deegan, you have your hands.
I do.
I can't see through Allison's.
So, so from, you know, a 30,000-foot level, this makes a lot of sense to me to do something like this. I think that having homes that are on a single level near a golf course can be very desirable for those who want to live on a golf course. But hitting one of John's points is unless you really have definition for what the future plans are for this golf course, to build housing for a golf course that may not exist doesn't make a lot of sense. So, we have to make sure that there's a commitment for long-term viability for the course. So, we have to make sure that there's a commitment for long-term viability for the course and/or potential sale as part of the ground lease of the golf course. And that's what the committee needs to look at and study. But the topography where this development is being proposed is quite challenging. And I went out and I walked it. And there will be some grade changes that are involved, and if you look at the plan carefully, you'll see dashed lines and then solid lines. Solid lines represent grading changes on this plan, whereas the dashed lines represent existing topography. So, with that said, there will be alteration in there, and what is currently a nice wooded area in there actually, won't be a nice wooded area when you're all done. So, it's going to be wide open, and you need to bear that in mind. And by opening that up, is that going to give a desired effect to the golf course A and to the housing units B? I think from a viability standpoint of helping to offset costs of the golf course itself and making it profitable, that if you were to do something like this and sell it, it's going to work great. And then we could have potentially a four-season pool, we could have maybe better tennis courts, and things along those lines. So, when the committee puts together its charge, taking all those considerations into play are important. And lastly, I fully support the concept of having a CPC application. However, to have a CPC application for funding for a project at Springtown meeting in two-plus months or two-and-a-half months, this committee is not going to have the time to vet this out, they're not going to have the time to study this, they're not going to be able to look at all these things with all this time coming up. And I strongly suggest that you defer the CPC application and either do an out-of-cycle in the fall or move it to the next spring. But those are just my comments.
Well, I, I agree a hundred percent. We can ask the CPC if they would delay consideration on a vote on this particular proposal until the fall. I agree with you a hundred percent on that.
I just don't want to rush it.
No, no, I don't want to believe you, trust me, I don't want to rush it either. Fran, is that right?
That's Fran Stanley, housing coordinator. So, I, I think entirely makes sense to defer the present CPC application, because it really has to have the community housing aspect clearly delineated in order to qualify for funding through the CPC.
For the housing, the housing bucket.
For the housing bucket.
Correct.
Because that's where the money would be coming from largely, unless you're exploring different recreational things, which is recreation, open space, which is another CPC bucket, but a lot of that money is already spoken for by lots of competitive projects in town. There is money in the housing bucket that will be there past Springtown meeting, be available for future town meetings. So, a delay is not going to have that empty out. That would be, so relatively cost-free, especially if you want to do it right the first time.
Yeah, so what I would ask, is it possible to ask the CPC that they keep considering this particular application for the fall to give us time? Is that something they do, or they ask you to resubmit next?
I can certainly ask them, will they consider an out-of-sequence application?
Based on this current application is before them?
Definitely.
I would like to do that, I'm sorry, with the board.
And then the other comment is that, you know, looking for the vision for the country club going forward fifteen, twenty years, I wonder if one of the elements of the charge could be thinking about whether the country club, whether it retains the golf course or not, becomes kind of the recreation center for the town. They're kind of disparate pieces of the park commission and other things of recreation. There used to be a recreation department, so for the town to think, you know, what does it want to do in terms of active recreation, and would the country club be the center of that, would be, makes be something to sort out, you know, while you're figuring out whether residential housing would complement that.
Becky, you've been very patient, thank you.
I just wanted to go back to what Josh said about this particular plan. I also walked this property. And I want to, first of all, point out that housing in this particular place is not going to overlook a golf course, because the golf course, is that the, the tee of the golf course is the green area, that is the very top of a hill, and all those lines indicate that it drops off very dramatically to behind the green, that's the area where the houses are being talked about. So the houses are not going to see the golf course, because they're going to be on the downside of, of a pretty steep slope. And also, that plan is drawn, requires a very large amount of earth moving, a large amount of clearing of trees. I support the idea of exploring housing, obviously, I've said that before, I'm, I'm not at all sure that this is the best plan that could be drawn up, it's beginning to think about, but I think there are some problems with this plan.
The committee would flush that out, I would imagine, right?
Right.
Mark, if this plan goes forward, if and when, does that mean you get Whitman Road actually paved year-round?
We would have to do that, yeah.
Yeah, I think a lot of people appreciate that.
Not everyone.
Not everyone, some people would, yeah.
We're losing our dirt roads in this town, and, and every year they get smaller and smaller as the pavement creeps wider and wider. So, there is something to be said about having a few dirt roads in town.
And we, another thing that has not been mentioned here, but goes without, almost goes without saying, is I think there is absolutely no way of doing a housing, housing construction on the country club site without extending the sewer. And then, so then, back to the vision, if we're going to extend the sewer down past the country club, are we in fact going to want to tie the country club into the sewer? And, so those are all things to be thought about.
So, I'll bring a charge back in a future meeting, I'll work with Becky and Fran, and try to draft something for the board to review in the next month or so?
I think, I think the board's been clear that that's their intent.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, next item, oh, sorry.
Back to my town manager's report.
Page four.
Yep. I respectfully request that the board approve a one-day beer and wine license for Salt and Light Cafe for a private event to be held on Tuesday, February twelfth, two thousand and nineteen, from six to nine.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion from the board? Any discussion from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Any abstentions? That's unanimous, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would respectfully request that the board approve a one-day beer and wine license for Groton History Center for a wine tasting gala to be held at the Groton School on Saturday, March sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen, from seven to ten.
So moved, seconded.
Been moved by Becky, seconded by Allison. Any further discussion? Anything from the public? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition, abstentions? I heard that is also unanimous, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this Wednesday night at seven o'clock at the library, you are posted for, at the library, the high school.
The high school library?
High school library, I'm sorry, I should be clear, the high school library with the school committee, and hopefully representatives from the town of Dunstable to talk about the school budget. I have set aside time tonight, because I wanted to make sure the board understands the impact of some of the budget numbers we've received. They are not set in stone yet, as both school committees have not voted these, these are the proposals, as we understand them at this point. With regard to Neshoba Tech, we had budgeted six hundred and eighty-five, two ninety-five for next year, which was an increase of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. I will tell you that the proposed assessment for the education piece is six hundred and ninety thousand. So we were pretty close in our estimate on what it was going to be with the six eighty-five, we were within five thousand dollars. However, they are doing an MSBA project for a roof repair at the school, and Groton's assess, proposed assessment is another thirty-five thousand or thirty-seven thousand dollars on top of that, bringing the amount up to seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and two dollars, which is forty-three thousand, five hundred and seven dollars higher than we had set aside in the budget because of the capital project. With regard to the Groton Dunstable Regional School District, it's my understanding that the current amount under consideration by the regional school committee is twenty-one million, five seventy-three, oh twenty-five, which is two hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars more than I set aside in our proposed, in the proposed operating budget. So I've given you this chart here, and I'll make it a little bit bigger so everybody can see it, maybe a little bit smaller, I don't know. Basically, the FY nineteen appropriation for Neshoba Tech was five fifty-seven, I set aside six eighty-five, which was a twenty-two percent increase, the proposal is now a hundred and seventy-one thousand, which is a thirty point seven seven percent increase. With regards to Groton Dunstable, the FY nineteen budget was twenty-two one five, and this is the operational assessment, not capital or debt, twenty-two one five, four twenty-eight. I had set aside an increase of five point three five percent, or a million eighty-one dollars, eighty-one thousand dollars. The current budget under consideration by the regional school district is twenty-one five seventy-three, oh twenty-five, or an increase of one point three five, seven million dollars, which is a six point seven two percent increase in their assessment. The proposed budget I submitted to you, if you take into consideration the governor's proposed local aid number and the reduction in the snow and ice deficit that I had talked about at our Saturday meeting, is now out of bounds by two hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars. For comparison purposes, the originally proposed budget is out of bounds by three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. So, I know you're going to have a lot of conversations on Wednesday, I think that's going to be a good meeting. I know the regional school committee is still debating and discussing how they're going to address that, but I just wanted the board to know what the impact is, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Allison?
I'm just wondering, Mark, you, I think last week you had mentioned that perhaps at the budget breakfast, that Neshoba Tech would have a per pupil cost? Do you know what the per pupil cost is for the tech and for GD?
I did not get that. Did they hand out a document to you that showed the per pupil cost?
Yes, well, they didn't hand it out to us, but Trish has that information.
I'll get that for you, Allison.
Yes, that'd be great, thank you.
Did it include per pupil cost, John? Do you remember seeing that, per pupil cost?
Well, what isn't, what isn't obvious from, from the data on the screen, is that the increase from our tech high school, a major part of that is because for the roof repair.
Thirty-eight thousand of it.
That would be our share of the new roof that they absolutely, it looks like, have to put on.
Right.
And I think only five thousands of that went to actual student activities of that increase, so.
Well, a hundred, it's a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollar increase for the students versus the one twenty-eight that I set aside. That's what John's saying.
How many students were posted next year?
Thirty-three, no, forty-four.
Groton?
Groton students.
Forty-three or forty-four students? Fifteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars per student without the roof. So if you use the six hundred and ninety thousand dollar figure you said, correct, and you divide by forty-four, forty-four students, it's fifteen thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars per student.
I'll get that confirmation.
Yeah, see what it is.
Yeah.
Don't publish that.
Get in touch with Robert Flynn.
Yep.
Who's our rep there.
Yeah, Rob Flynn has done a really good job keeping me apprised of what's been happening over there, and I appreciate it.
If you can get that information, Mark, ideally for the last two or three years, maybe, so that we have a, a graph opportunity.
Sure.
But, yeah, so, we don't have any choice, basically. Neshoba Tech gives their assessment to us, there's no, there's no chance that they're going to be changing it or that we can negotiate it.
The way, that's a very good question, Becky. The, the way that it works is a majority of the communities in the school district have to vote to approve the assessment, and that's how the assessment gets set. So there are eight districts, eight communities in the district, five of the communities have to vote to approve it, and then if, say Groton voted no, Groton would be forced to pay that assessment. Similar to the way the Groton Dunstable Regional School District works, there are only two communities, so both communities have to adopt it. But five of the eight have to accept the budget.
So.
Drag-along clause.
One thing that they did show some figures about was enrollment. They said that their total enrollment has gone down a little bit, not to a surprising degree, I think they said they pretty much anticipated this. However, as we know, our enrollment is going up, and they showed a chart of all of the towns, and I, you know, it was fairly quick, but what I believe is that Groton and Pepperell were the two towns with an increase in enrollment, and every other town had a decrease, some of which, some of them quite dramatic, so, I mean, the program is fantastic over there, I can understand why we have kids going there, but it is kind of unfortunate for our budget.
Okay, anything else on this item?
I don't have anything else, Mr. Chairman.
All right, let's move forward to other business. Go ahead, Josh.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Mark, please go back to that number. Oh, I'm sorry, Josh, yes. So, if we have no changes coming forward from Neshoba Tech, and if the Groton Dunstable school committee follows the number of guidance that is up on the board, and if the governor's budget stays where it is and isn't augmented by committee or changed, then we're going to be out three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars at the moment out of, out of budget, which would require either cuts in operational budget, employees and/or other things, or a override, is that correct?
Absolutely.
So, this number doesn't include the hundred and ten thousand dollars that would be required for two additional firefighters. So, in the event that we were to move forward with that as well, that would put this number of four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars roughly?
If the governor's budget doesn't hold true.
Wait, wait, that isn't the number, I'm sorry.
A firefighter is a number.
No, but that, isn't the current number you said now, two fourteen?
If you can, I think Josh said without the governor's numbers.
I'm, I'm assuming the worst-case scenario.
Oh.
Okay, often the governor puts together, you know, local aid packages and increases across the board, but all of a sudden, Boston and Cambridge somehow swallow that up.
Oh, okay, okay, I understand.
If, if the advocacy is there to yank money away from smaller communities like ours, then the worst-case scenario would be that three twenty-two number. So, it's going to be somewhere presumably between two fourteen and three twenty-two, is that fair, Mark?
Yes.
And that again, if we were to add two additional firefighters.
Right.
Then the number would range from three fourteen, I'm sorry, three twenty-four, up to four thirty-two.
Yes.
Do you follow that?
Yes.
And regardless, we're out of whack by some large magnitude that's going to require an override. And one of the things that we need to consider, and I said this at the Saturday budget meeting with the finance committee, is that Mark has projected budget shortfalls in the range of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars at a minimum moving forward for the next fiscal twenty-one to fiscal twenty-five calendar years, is that correct?
Correct.
So, if you said two hundred and fifty thousand, and I think that number might be conservative now, Mark, based on some increases that we're seeing.
I think you are probably correct on that statement.
So, still using the conservative numbers, four additional years out is a million dollars, plus an additional potential four hundred thousand dollars. I think that rather than going for overrides five years in a row in order to maintain town government in order, the likelihood of success of that is somewhere between slim and none, in my opinion. That we need to formulate, and I believe Mark is working on this, would be one override that would cover five fiscal cycles, and the money from that override would not be allocated all at once, but it would be allocated over the course of those five years. That could work, however, in year six, the town managers told me that Groton had done this before, and they found themselves at the end of this larger override that occurs one time, they find themselves way behind the eight ball. So, I think we need to face the facts, that while our taxes are high, that our town is growing, the cost of educating our students is growing, and the costs of community services are growing. So, when you look at all of those various things, it's time that we proactively look at a single override, in my opinion, that would cover us for five years. That's just my two cents worth.
John?
I just have one comment, and it's important for people to understand, I believe, that there's another side of this, and it's called the revenue side. And so, the number up there is based on our revenue projections coming in where we think they're going to come in. If they, if they come in lower, this number goes up. If they come in higher, this number will go down. But, we need to also keep an eye on what's going on with revenue and the revenue projections.
And that's part, I believe, of what the microcommittee might be looking at as well, once that's put together.
Yep.
Anybody else on this item? Are we ready to move to other business?
Mr. Chairman, if you go to, under other business.
Page nineteen?
Yeah, the education prom sack resolution on page nineteen.
Right.
I don't know anything about that, Mr. Chairman, so...
So, I'll, I'll handle this as much as I can. So, I was, I received an email from Mr. Kin, Senator Edward Kennedy's office requesting that I ask the board to pass a resolution in support of the Education Promise Act. I asked it to be put on the agenda accordingly, and I, in my email, I copied our, our school board chair, Marlena Gilbert, also has to be the board's liaison to the school board, to kind of give some insight. To me, it sounds like they are going to be discussing this at more length February sixth. So, I wanted to give this to the board as an idea for, you know, review, understanding, take a looksees, with the intent that after the sixth, when you can understand more of it from the point of view of the school committee, that we can come back as a, a future agenda and consider putting this, and consider adopting a resolution like this. Does that mean it has to go to town meeting, or is it just the board does it?
Or can adopt the resolution?
So, nothing needs to be done at this point. I appreciate everybody's attention to the matter and look forward to understanding more from it on the sixth, and then we can bring it back to another agenda item in, in February to perhaps make a resolution or discuss if we would like to.
Can I ask just a question? So, Senator Kennedy's letter refers to this Education Promise Act, and, and Marlena's messages have referred to the Fund Our Future campaign. Are, are they both targeting the same piece of legislation, do you know?
I believe that is the case. I suspect we'll find out more clarity on that, the different initiatives on, on Wednesday. John?
As big a supporter of public education as I am, I look at this, and I have a message for Senator Kennedy. The day he walks in here and delivers to us our charter, which we've been waiting three years for, I'll support something he'd like.
All right.
And it's, and that sounds like being hard, but it's floating around in there again. I was, I was looking at it this weekend. You can't get any status. It's just there, it's got a new number, and...
Fairly noted. I will not put this on agenda for consideration until our charter has been passed. How about that?
You might let him know then.
You know, oftentimes, in the past, we've had our state senator and state representative come in before our board. I would like to see if the town manager would invite them in to a meeting in late February, early March, where we can have both of our representatives here and...
They could bring the charter in at that time.
And I think we can make our point about supporting or not supporting anything that they want, along with following through with a commitment that is required on them to get this through on the state level.
All right, let, let's be fair.
No.
Representative Harrington has, has done as much as she can to help us in this process, and Mr. Kennedy is newly elected and not the responsible party for us having a delay.
Who was?
It was the, it was the now Lowell city manager who left us.
Understood, so we can just have a discussion. I'm not saying to point fingers and bring a sledgehammer.
I recognize that. I just, let's not get, let's not get, let's not try to have a, an air of accusational or delay on anybody's part. We know that they're working hard and are going to have to this done, and we look forward to the charter coming in.
We do know that?
That, that's an assumption, my friend.
I would like to still invite the man.
We could send a letter right away urging them to really follow this.
Mike Bouchard is working very closely with both of them.
Something along the lines that we've been waiting three years, when are you gonna get to it?
We have not been waiting three years, let's be honest. We made changes last...
Okay, this is not on the agenda, it's out of scope. Let's table this and move forward, please.
Charter change last year, yes.
Let's discuss and review, okay, so we're done with this. Review and potentially select an investigator pursuant to the board's vote on January twenty-ninth, twenty-nineteen, to conduct investigations in outside entity. So, pursuant to the fact that my workload was getting far more than I could handle with, with other matters for the board, I delegated this responsibility to Member Pine, taking the list that was given to us by...
No, not, guess again.
Allison, I delegated this to Allison, taking the list that was given to me by town council and adding in a couple of other ideas that had been passed my way for her to contact and validate and flesh out the potential, so who could do the work and what their cost might be and the time and scope. So Allison's got a spreadsheet where she's done that, and...
I think we could probably go through it verbally, at least to start with.
Okay.
So, I, I reached out to, as Barry said, the folks that KP Law had recommended, and then added on Mead Tallerman and Costa, and Murphy Hesse-Tumey and Lehane, two other law firms. Spoke with all of them, everyone was, was very welcoming in return calls, so that part of it was actually far easier than I had anticipated.
That's good, yeah.
It might be. Couple of them told me flat out they simply didn't have time for this, not, not in a...
No, it's just...
Not a parental sort of way, but in a, I just don't have time in my schedule. A couple of them also referred me on to other folks with whom they had worked. So ultimately, I have four entities that I had kind of, in my mind, given a green light to, in terms of viability, two that I had kind of put a yellow on, one was recommended by someone on the list, and I wasn't able to connect with him. The other one, although an attorney herself, would defer to KP Law for all the legal side items, which started to get a little bit messy and...
Appreciate that, yes.
I think we don't want to go there.
Okay, yeah.
And then there were two or three in the end who I kind of said were red, simply because they said they didn't have the ability to take this on. To the extent that I, I spoke to them, none of them have either a prior relationship with the town or any knowledge of the individuals so far who are involved. The pricing, so there were four in the green category, two were at ninety dollars an hour, one was at two-ten, and one was at two-thirty.
Did any give you an impression? I mean, of course, they probably wouldn't just do not to hold themselves, but did they give you impressions for the amount of hours or something like this usually takes?
Not, not specifically, I mean, they all, um, the general impression that they all gave me and that I had from speaking to each of them individually, as well as in a group, was that we are not in a situation in all likelihood of looking at some sort of legal type of action, criminal or anything of that sort, that this is probably going to come back with a formal, um, letter or report of findings, and then potentially we, as a board, will need to look at our policies and determine where we go forward from there. The folks who were willing to put a, a process around it said we would probably come out, interview people, that might be a day or two, you know, they didn't anticipate that it would get much beyond that. They all talked about, you know, the willingness to come in, meet with us, set kind of a dollar amount, that they would then reach out to us and say, oh, we're getting close to that limit, how do you want us to proceed?
Is there a significant difference between the ninety-dollar-an-hour individuals and the two-ten, two-thirty?
From what I could see, the, the two that are ninety dollars an hour are both private investigators with a background in law enforcement, municipal employment and internal affairs kind of thing. One is a retired state police officer. The other two are large law firms.
Got it.
So that seemed to be the big breakdown there.
It's overhead. I heard that as there's overhead.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, you know, the, the two less expensive alternatives...
It's full of legal training.
Yes.
That is a few...
Yeah, that's overhead still.
The two less expensive alternatives, one was in Pembroke and one is in West Boylston, the law firms, one is in Newburyport and one is in Boston.
Right.
Okay.
Becky, you have a question?
Yes, so, I had passed on the recommendation from the Maya Insurance person to you, Barry. Did that get passed on to you, Allison?
Not unless they were incorporated into these, the list of folks, I don't believe so.
A large firm in Boston. I, I guess I think that they should, they were recommended by our rep for the insurance policy that we have that might cover some of it.
A specific firm was?
Yes. Two names at the firm, LCCP.
And I've been in oversight, I thought I tried to send you everything I had on that.
I don't think so.
Lewison, Costello, Clunden, and Faust.
Nope.
And he gave me, the, the insurance guy gave me two specific names at that firm. One of them was the Lewison person, whose name is there.
Actually, yeah, I think I was in the jeopardy of committing an open meeting law violation if I forwarded your email. So, it's been discussed in public, so that's fine.
I mean, I'm certainly willing to reach out to one more call. My, my guess is that they would fall into the large attorney pricing...
Yeah, they are in Boston.
...after the woods. So if we, if we felt like kind of conceptually that there was a benefit in terms of information to go in with a lawyer as opposed to a, a non-lawyer, we can certainly incorporate them. If folks feel like ninety dollars an hour and a, you know, a police or law enforcement background is gonna get us what we need, then...
Yeah.
I, I guess I'm uneasy with a private investigator. I'd rather, I think that there's some challenging issues here, and I think we need to, like Barry said last week, not make this decision based on dollars. And I, because this came from the, from the insurance that, I don't fully understand this insurance policy, but this is something that we pay for already, and he's the regional coordinator, and he recommended this firm, I think we ought to at least consider them.
In, in general, the insurance, either they're gonna cover it or not, they're not necessarily gonna cover it because a specific firm wasn't...
No, he told me that specifically. He said we could choose our own firm.
Right.
I just think we should include them in the people that we're considering.
Will you forward me the name of the firm and stuff, and I'll...
It's been spoken out loud, so it's not public, so, yes, please, yes.
I just didn't get it.
No, no, I meant that it's no longer an issue.
Right.
Can I just write it for you right now?
Yeah, that's not, absolutely.
Yeah. I don't have contact number for it.
That's okay.
All right, so, thank you, Allison, you've done yeoman's work doing this. I would allow this to be, since it's been discussed and open, with that one addition and your analysis, could be forwarded to the, to Dawn and then included in our next packet for us to review at the next agenda.
Is, is, could I ask, I'm not clear how we would go about selecting, do we feel like we need to interview, or...
We either need to trust one member's judgment of refining them down and, and their opinion, or we draw this out for five years.
Well, I, I would say that, I think there's some, some middle ground there, and I'm happy to, to either call back folks or, you know, kind of set up some sort of interview-type situation. To me, it would be helpful if, if we, as a board, decided...
Which category?
Which category we're looking at, and that, you know, gets us down to two or three folks to call.
Yeah, okay.
Which feels very doable.
I think that's actually very doable, given that you analyzed this and you've given us two categories. Let's get a feel from the board and perhaps even a vote of which type of investigator is, we prefer for this, this situation, either a affiliate with a law firm or not. I think that's the clarity that I'm getting here. Is that an accurate distinction?
Yep.
Okay. So, I heard from, I already heard from Miss Pine that she prefers one affiliate with a law firm. Josh, do you have an opinion one way or the other?
Not affiliated with a law firm.
Not affiliated with a law firm. John?
I believe it should be, the person should be affiliate, well, should be a lawyer, a licensed lawyer.
Okay.
In the Commonwealth.
Allison, what's your opinion on that?
I was more comfortable in talking with folks with the non-attorney alternative. My take on it kind of at a high level is that the attorneys were very much looking for, um, kind of, what, what, what's been violated, what's been violated, whereas the, investigator, private investigators were much more focused on, so we would come in, we would figure out what happened, what the conversations had been, and we would present that report to the board to make a decision or decisions.
So, I, I hear it two and two.
Well, I'm, I'm also, if I may speak, I'm, personally, I, I'm struggling with how we would even evaluate if we interviewed people. What is it we want to know? I'm not sure.
You've been, we've already been given a list of people that are clearly, that have been considered qualified by our labor council to, to run the investigation based on parameters he knows. Either we trust that his judgment, as labor council indicates, that these people are qualified, and we're simply making a determination between them based on who we feel, or we look at their resumes, or we, we understand who we talk with, you know, we got two, so we're, we're, we're gonna narrow it down by type, hopefully tonight, and then within that type, we can narrow it down to one or two individuals based on the, the scope of their work or other things. Allison?
I will say that, that comparing the, the four options that are viable with the list that we were originally, that I was given, the two law firms were not provided by KMP. One of the investigators was a reference through from a recommendation of KMP, but was not recommended himself directly by KMP. So, we have one investigator who was recommended by KMP, that they've worked with him, he's worked with them, if that makes a difference.
And what's his background again, please?
Thirty-eight years in law enforcement with a focus on municipal employment investigations and internal affairs background.
Thank you.
All right, so, since, since I haven't weighed in on the law firm, no law firm, I'm actually in favor of the investigator point of view, given that I feel that there's a little less potential bias as far as finding a fact than, than you might get in a law firm, so, and we could probably argue differences on that all day long. So, I'm happy to take a vote on that, and it'll be three to two, or we could proceed accordingly.
Just as a, another point, that investigator is also located in West Boylston, so he is not only less per hour, but his travel time would be the most reasonable of the ones that we're looking at.
Is, I'm not comfortable making a decision without even knowing names of the law firms that we're talking about. So, you said the two law firms were not recommended by KP?
Nope, the, the two law firms were Murphy Hesse-Tumey and Lehane.
And where did that recommendation?
They are the attorneys for the school district.
Aha, okay.
And then Mead Tallerman and Costa, who were finalists in our last...
Right, and the two investigators, you said one was a name that came through KP, is that right?
Yes, yep, and that's Integrity Investigations and Consulting.
And what, what about the other?
The other was a reference from, um, one of the investigators, the KP, one of the firms, I don't know others. One of the investigators said he didn't have time to take this on, but he's worked very closely with his other investigator and gave me his information.
And then, and investigator that KP had recommended?
The, the original investigator I called who had no availability, KP had recommended?
Right, okay.
The person he recommended, KP didn't mention, but...
Right.
John?
The thing that's most important to me is to understand how many of these types of investigations has someone done? And how many of them were of a similar nature to the situation we have here? A simple statement like, I forget what it was, but this was one of the investigators about, he does internal stuff for police departments and this abstract municipal something. You know, well, maybe that was thievery in the, in the...
No, so they were, that one is the one I think we're, we're kind of talking about in general, and he was saying municipal employment, so when you, you know, when we...
What's that mean?
When we, when we came down with finalists for the police chief position and we had investigations done.
It's like that.
It's a background check and...
Yeah, well, that's not what we need here.
Right, right.
I mean, I'm perfectly happy to get more information from any or all of these folks.
I mean, that's what's important to me. The resume, not, it's what's your experience in, in handling these kinds of things and, and specifically how many of a like nature of what we've got here.
You're going to swing my, you're going to swing my position on this to a law firm. All right. And, and I think that Mead Talaman, from my knowledge of them, is a very good firm. Jay Talaman's a very good man. If we could get Jay to do this.
He was not available. There were, they gave me two names who it would be.
What were the names?
Kate Fedoroff.
Kate, yeah.
Who I believe may have been the one who came in and interviewed us.
I know who she was.
And then the other one was Mike Kenefek. I'll have to look up the spelling on that one. But those were the two who.
I'm amenable to Mead Talaman and Costa.
But I'm not.
This is why we get the vote.
So another option would be to get back in touch with this, the guy that oversees our insurance policy and ask him how we should, you know, what sorts of things we, we should consider.
Does, does, does the board feel we need to wait any longer to make a decision?
The sooner we get this going, the sooner it's completed. The sooner it's completed, the sooner we can move on with what will occur or will not occur.
Running into it. And I'll give you my rationale. We're entering a period where I know at least one member will be absent next weekend, another member will be absent, the meeting after that. So if we don't make a decision tonight, we're talking about making a decision in March. And I'm very uncomfortable delaying proceedings until then.
Could I ask another question?
If, if you can wait until I finish talking, absolutely, please.
Absolutely.
The, the situation here is such that I think that we've actually interviewed this, this, we've seen an RFP, we've seen enough information from Mead Talaman and Costa. And some of us felt perhaps that they were better than a finalist for our new town council position. That being said, I don't want to delay this till March, but if we can't make a decision this night, I see no, I see no option other than doing so. Becky?
So two of you have been on the school committee. The school committee's law firm. Do you have thoughts about that?
So they've only been the school committee's law firm for three or four years. I don't remember John when. I know I was on the school committee when we made the change.
If you can interrupt for one second? Really difficult situations for us when we were on the school thing.
Yep.
And they seemed to be really happy with them. So I wouldn't rule them out.
Yep.
You, I'm sorry, you would rule them out?
Would not.
Would not?
Would not rule them out as a possibility.
Depending on the lawyer. I work with Andy very closely during school negotiations.
And it would not be Andy. He mentioned that as well. It was Sarah Spatafor.
Would anybody like to make a motion or do you want to table this till March?
Don't want to table it till March.
No.
So let's have a motion, please.
I move that we retain Mead, Talaman and Costa to continue with the investigation that we decided in favor of last week.
I'll second for discussion purposes.
Moving seconded under discussion, Josh Deegan?
Yeah, I'm not comfortable with the attorney, her first name was Kate, conducting the investigation. I was not impressed. However, I will reiterate that either Mead or Talaman would be good and I don't know who this other gentleman is whose name you mentioned. But I'm fine with using that firm. Again, not using that attorney, Kate. I'm sorry to single her out, but.
Mike Keneflect, is that the individual?
Keneflect, yeah, I'm looking up his name right now so that we can stop referring to him as some other guy.
Becky, you have a question?
I agree. My recollection is that I also had the same feeling about the three of them who came that night.
John?
I, I think we would be wise to not only identify a first choice, but identify a second choice in case when the rubber meets, meets the road, the first choice can't come up with somebody before summer or whatever at this time. So that Allison can go and get somebody engaged here and get this thing going.
All right, well, we, we have two firms that we could choose from. I'll, I'll entertain as an amendment to the motion to have a backup firm.
Well, it could be a backup firm or you could just put either of these two firms. We're, we're trying to be so granular here with, with nothing but.
We do have this other firm that was recommended that I, I know we haven't had personal contact with them, but we were given two specific names in a firm that.
And we don't know if they're available, if they can do the work and their fees.
We don't, but they, as a backup, they could be considered.
But we can't move forward then until March if that's the case. So do you want, do you want them to be included? Then we wait till March.
I don't want to wait till March.
No, but I, I think we could include that they would be consulted as a backup if our first choice isn't.
I don't know anything about them. If Allison hasn't checked them out.
There's been a, a motion on the floor. Is it, John, do you wish to request an amendment to that motion? Sound like you did.
I do. I request that we amend that motion to identify the two, two firms we've been talking about. And with an understanding that they're, they're equals. Who can do, who can do the job for us and get started in relatively near time.
Allison, are you comfortable with that assessment and is that a friendly amendment?
Yeah, but I'll reiterate, I don't want that individual attorney absolutely.
Okay, so we have, I'm, I'm happy with the amendment. So we, I would move that we move forward either with MTC and Mike Kenef, Kenefek, which is indeed his name. Or MHTL with Sarah Spatafor. Is that?
That's fine.
So can I hear the, and accepted and seconded, please?
I accept that as a friendly amendment.
And I'll second it. Okay, so we have a motion on the table for whichever firm can, I guess, begin the soonest. Is that accurate?
Yeah, and the scope is going to be to investigate the complaint as previously voted by Jennifer Evans with supporting documentation. Are we going to have to discuss that still?
Let's, let's select the firm and debate with them. All right, so all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Any abstentions?
Can we put a limit though on this as part of a motion to, that rates two hundred and ten dollars, two hundred and ten dollars per hour? That once they go beyond five thousand dollars that they notify us for additional appropriation.
I heard that as a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion on the table is that we authorize up to five thousand dollars prior to bringing back a request to, for more funding from this board. Is that, everybody clear on that?
Yeah.
Any discussion? Any ideas? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstention? All right, this matter is done. The next, next item in the agenda is determine the makeup and membership of subcommittee to negotiate a new three-year contract with the town manager. Member Pine, you'd like to make a motion on this?
No.
No, okay. It's an oppression, you might. Apologize.
I had some conference with town council in the hallway and we took a vote back in November to enter into contract negotiations with the town manager. Is that correct?
That is correct. Do you want me to read the exact motion to you?
No. Not at the moment. And as part of that, there did not say to renew a contract, correct, as part of the motion? It said to enter into contract negotiations, correct?
That is correct.
So in the course of reading the documentation for this investigation and, and other information, it came to my attention to read the town manager's contract and there is a line in the town manager's contract that says two things. One, that we had to notify him if we were going to renegotiate his contract six months prior to the expiration, which is why we had that motion back in November. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And the second was, there's a date of February fifteenth, prior to the expiration of his contract. And it says that if we have not executed or negotiated a contract, actually, it's, it's right here. The board shall notify the employee in writing on it before February fifteenth whether or not it intends to renew this agreement. Failure for the board to give such written notice shall result in an automatic renewal of the agreement for a one-year period. Subject to appropriation and the availability of funds. Should this agreement be automatically renewed, the same terms and conditions shall apply unless modified by a written agreement of the parties. So what I want to make sure is, it's not my intent to say that I'm not interested in renegotiating a three-year contract. I voted in favor of that. I just want to make sure that the town manager is not under the belief that this February fifteenth date comes. And if you have not had a new contract, that your contract will automatically renew for one year. Is that your belief or not your belief, Mark?
I received notification from the chair of the board's vote in November that we're entering to a negotiation on a new contract. That is my belief.
So, yes, on, I had sent this note to Mr. Dadd in writing, copied both labor councils or both legal councils of the town. Dear Mr. Dadd, on November nineteenth, twenty nineteen, the select board of Groton voted unanimously to enter into negotiations for an extension of your existing contract. Recurring to your contract, I'm giving written confirmation of this vote prior to the February fifteenth deadline and reinforcing the codification of the board's directive from November nineteenth. The pertinent minutes of November nineteenth, twenty eighteen read as follows. Ms. Minugian moved to request that they open negotiations with the town manager for an extension of the contract. Mr. P. seconded the motion. The motion carried unanimously. Best regards, myself. Mr. Mazur commented on another board member's request for clarification on that. Said that based on my email to, to Mark, the, the board's vote to renegotiate Mark's contract serves as a vote to notify the board's intention to renew prior to the two fifteen, nineteen date. Based on that vote, there, so that's it. So the labor council's opinion is that that notification and the preceding vote serves to validate that clause in the contract.
Okay. So what's the meaning now of the February fifteenth date?
It's been, it's been met. We have notified prior to February fifteenth that we intend to enter negotiations.
And that based on the success of those negotiations with an intent to renew?
Yes, I mean, negotiations can fall at any time by any party. That's the reality of negotiations, right?
But it's.
We're not, so I appreciate that that's been discussed and, and in closure. I don't think we can, can argue minutia of a legal position on this. We've got our council's position that we're covered. That, that we've made a notification, therefore the contract will not, should not, ought to renew. So is that satisfy that statement of yours or that question of yours, Josh?
Yes.
Okay. So now onto the matter of determining the makeup and membership of subcommittee to negotiate a new three-year contract with the town manager.
I, I would like to be part of that.
We have a volunteer and Mr. Deegan to be part of that.
I would like to as well.
And a volunteer and Ms., and Allison to be part of that. I'll get it, don't worry, I promise. Becky?
I actually think that, that is a fine subcommittee. So I would support those two members. Going back to the previous discussion, I've been confused about this process all along and the fact that we've got a decision to launch an investigation.
Please don't conflate the items at this point.
No, the one thing has nothing necessarily to do with the other.
I guess, well.
I mean, it does, but it doesn't, but it does. And I think that you need to use the discretion of the people that you point to the subcommittee to conduct the negotiations in good faith.
Yes.
Absolutely, right. So I think it's a great subcommittee.
All right, can I hear a motion? Actually, since, since it's been, who wants to make a motion? I'll make the motion. I don't ever make motions.
I'll make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
I move that the select board appoint Josh and I to negotiate, to enter into negotiations with the town manager for a three-year contract extension.
Next.
Enter, how about just to enter into contract negotiations?
Yes, to enter into contract negotiations.
All right. The move, I'll second it for discussion. Under discussion, I believe for clarification, since it is a subcommittee, any meetings have to be posted, even those are, even if those are executive session meetings.
That's correct.
They do need to be posted, but it would be executive session.
Yeah, I just want to make sure everybody's aware that they will be posted as executive session meeting, minutes, or meetings, et cetera. And then any discussions that come out of those would also be done in executive session for clarification or guidance or any other guide.
And then updates would be required in executive sessions as to where we stand in negotiations. So we can get guidance from the rest of the board as.
That's correct, yep. I just want to be clear on that. It's a subcommittee. We will be posting. There needs some, there's some, maybe some delays in getting that around because of the posting requirements of three days. But we're going to, we have to do this, you know, according to the subcommittee laws of the meeting law. Becky?
But we don't have to negotiate this by February fifteenth.
No.
No. And so, right, because it takes some time presumably. Would, is it likely that we, the first step in the process is that we would meet as a whole board in executive session to discuss?
Usually that's the case, yes. Usually we have to give guidance and we can do that in public session. We do have to do this part in public session, then we can go into executive session.
And that would be executive session for the purposes of conducting strategy of collective bargaining and or contract negotiation, which would just be this board in absence of the town manager.
Correct.
I have another question.
Yes, go ahead.
Should we ask the personnel board to update their salary survey in preparation?
We can't discuss that in open session.
We can't discuss that in?
Don't discuss that right now, please.
What?
Do not discuss anything involving negotiating process in public right now, please.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
So can we get that executive session?
Can we schedule that executive session? I know.
It's your schedule that's a challenge, so.
I'm, I'm challenged.
I didn't say that. I said it's your schedule that's a challenge. It's very clear. I understand that. One moment, we'll get to.
So, so at any rate, anytime after the twenty-third.
Okay.
I won't be here till the fourth.
I can do it remotely next week.
I mean, the, the other question I guess would be whether you're.
Tom, want to pay, Tom, want to pay my long distance bill?
The question I have would be whether you're comfortable with the four of us meeting to get.
No, I'm fine to call in. I'm, I'm okay to call in. It's not, it shouldn't take more than half an hour.
Can I, because it's a matter of logistics, could people tell me the dates they're okay with having an executive session?
Thursday morning.
Thursday morning, okay, so no.
Friday morning.
Got it.
This week, I could do any of those.
All right. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion on this item? Take a vote on this, please.
What is the vote?
The vote is to appoint a subcommittee consisting of Josh Deegan and Allison Minugian to enter negotiations with the town manager. Be the board's negotiating body. Any further discussion? Connie Sartini, you have a question?
I have to go ahead to your vote for a subcommittee.
That'd be great, thank you. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? I heard unanimous. Connie?
Yes.
Do you want to grab the microphone just for the folks at home, please? Thank you.
Connie Sartini from the Groton Herald. I, I just would like to be clear. And I'm a little confused by your discussions. I apologize for that. But I understand you took a vote in November to enter into contract negotiations.
Correct.
Notifying the town manager that that would be the course of action. And then something occurs by the fifteenth of February?
According to his contract, we had to make that notification prior to the fifteenth of February or else his contract, the contract ought to renew.
For one year.
So i- if you've made a notification prior to the fifteenth of February.
Correct.
That's considered that you've notified him that his contract is going to be discussed.
That's correct.
For renewal. For renewal. Okay. That's, was it clear from your discussion?
Now this vote takes another step down that same direction, right? So, and we're before February fifteenth. So I consider us covered as a town and that we will not have an automatic renewal of, of, of the contract for one year.
Thank you.
All right, on the next page, ongoing issues.
I have no updates.
No updates, ongoing issues. On select board liaison reports, Becky?
Yes, I'll just report that the nonprofit council met this past Friday morning with twenty-five people attending the meeting. A lot of good energy and people volunteering to pursue basically ways to do better, to have a community calendar and electronic website with electronic capacity for people to interact with each other and with the public.
Thank you, sounds good. Anything else from another, any other liaisons? We're going to do a big liaison on Wednesday, right? So, there'll be a lot of liaising. All right, regular scheduled minutes of January twenty eighth, twenty nineteen.
I move that we approve the Mr. President.
Becky, let's get a second before Becky.
I'll second, but I.
Becky seconds. Go ahead, Becky.
I have two suggested edits on page two. The last paragraph, I gotta find it, what page is this on in our packet?
Thirty-three.
Okay, thirty-three, there we go, page two.
Oh, there's an error in the second sentence.
It is, I'm looking at the, the last paragraph on page two, so at the bottom. Ms., Ms. Pease, actually, I think that's, Mr. Pease said that Ms. Pine did some research on the insurance for the town and whether or not this was covered. The sen, the next sentence should say it, it is possible that it would be a covered expense.
That's correct. Clarification of intent there.
Yeah, did you get that done?
Yep.
Okay, and then the next on, at the top of page three. The last line in that first paragraph there, it says Ms. Pine asked again. I would respectfully request that the again be struck because I only asked once. I didn't, I didn't, well, I asked what would happen if other complaints came forward.
Okay, I'll ask again. Members are encouraged to, if you have corrections to the minutes.
I understand, I apologize.
Please send those in.
I didn't read them until four-thirty this afternoon, I'm sorry.
Okay, as amended minutes.
I have a problem or a concern with the second one.
Second one what?
Second, second amendment.
Ask, am I striking that word again?
Yes.
I believe that the first question, having rewatched that section quite a bit, there was a comment made about other complaints might come in. That was made by Mr. Geiger. I asked Brian Mazur for a clarification about what would happen if other complaints came in.
I would defer to other members. My recollection was that Becky brought this up many times.
I'm going to table these minutes to another, another, another schedule.
The tape is available.
All right, with that, the board intends to reconvene in an executive session. May I get a?
I move that we exit and adjourn from regular session and enter an executive session pursuant to MGL. I don't have it in front of me, Barry, I'll bring it.
Yeah, yeah, MGL twenty-one, sorry.
It's not part of, it's not part of this agenda, we're actually going back to the.
That's why I can't refer to it.
No problem, hold on, I'll get it for you. Apologize.
Sorry, ma'am, I'm sorry. I just don't have any documentation.
And I closed it, of course, right?
Of course you did.
It shouldn't take more than twenty minutes.
No, no, it's okay. It's right here on the town website. Oh my God, sometimes this bothers me.
Look at thirty-eight, section twenty-one, A, clause one and two. That, that's my motion.
Confirmed. Moved, there's a second.
Second. Should I be recusing?
We're not in executive session yet until we have roll call vote. Please don't discuss anything related to executive session right now.
Deegan, aye.
Pine, aye.
Minugian, aye.
Pease, aye.
Geiger, aye.
All right, we're not in executive session.